Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Chris, it's 6:30. We have eight of nine board members. We're still short one in at the high school. Margot is here, although I don't believe Margot has been officially appointed. But we can deal with that if we get pressed for voting members. So I would like to call this meeting to order. It's now 6:31. This is a meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Supervisor Union Board, which is occurring on Wednesday, August 26. We're doing this over Zoom. I'd like to issue a hearty welcome to everyone who's in the room, board member, non-board member, principal, member of staff, member of the public, and whoever else decides to tune in. Chris, I'm aware of only one adjustment to the agenda, and that is I would like to move Item 7B under Old Business for Discussion in Action, which is a report from the auditors. And I'd like to move that up immediately after adjustments here and before communication and public comment. And I do realize that there may be people here tonight that would like to get to communication and public comments early. However, I'm going to note the fact once again that communication and public comment is the public's opportunity to communicate information, concerns, and comments to the board, but it's not interactive discussion. We will, however, be having an interactive discussion later on toward the end of the meeting under our Item 8, which is Questions and Answers. I think people probably can see the agenda that Chris has posted up tonight. So, Chris, are there any other adjustments that we need to make?
No, I have none.
Okay.
A point of order, David?
Yes.
Where are you putting Item Number 3?
Item Number 3, Communication and Public Comments, would occur immediately after the Communication and Public Comment would occur immediately after we hear from the auditors, which would be the next item.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for asking. Good question. Okay, Chris, if you're ready, and I believe I saw Miranda's name on the Zoom, why don't you make an introduction and tell us what we're going to do?
So the audits are complete, so I've asked Ron, Cindy, and Miranda from RHR Smith to tonight to give their presentation of the audit and answer any questions that the board might have. This is a similar presentation that they did last year, so I can hand it over to either Cindy or Ron.
You guys hear me?
Yes.
Miranda, why don't you go ahead and start the finance piece of it, and I'll hop in.
Okay. So the big question that usually everybody wants to know is how did we end the year? And this is for FY '19. So, you know, to go down the list, I can say Grafton was positive, $15,000. Athgraph was positive, $56,000. West ended with $343,000. Bellows Falls ended with $207,000 in fund balance, and Rockingham had $1.38 million in fund balance. So, very good ending for those for those school districts. Athens was in the hole, $21,000, and the SU was $5,000 in the hole. So, that $5,000 should be able to be made up fairly easily. And then, as you know, Athens' deficit is actually absorbed by Grafton, Athgraph, and West when they combined to became the union, to become the Union Elementary for FY '20. And so, overall, your books ended up fairly well for FY '19 with all of that. So we do have those positives going into FY '20 as we begin, as we begin the FY '20 process.
And I would just add, you know, to go up, you know, where Miranda, pick up where Miranda left off, your books ended very well because of all the work, effort, and, you know, and, you know, blood and sweat, you know, that went into those, you know, getting them very well. And, and, and as we've been talking with Chris over the past five months and continue to talk and continue to adjust, I think we've got a great game plan to give Flora the best chance to sit in that chair and, and get you guys information sooner, you know, than, than back in April or May when we started some of these preliminary discussions. And as I told Chris, I said, we want to be sitting having these conversations with you, you know, on December 1st, you know. So there's a lot of work to be done, you know. We look forward to working with Flora and Chris and everybody at the, at the SU and all the member districts to do it, you know. But yeah, I mean, we're excited about this year. We know that there's a lot of work that still needs to be done, you know. But we also know, you know, that those books were, they were in some rough shape, you guys, last year, as you guys all know from the last conversations. And we know that there's problems this year. You know, we just want to work through those problems with you and give you guys information timely so that you're not sitting waiting whether or not there's any bad news coming.
Hey, Chris, would you pull down the agenda? I think we've, we've got it now. Thank you. I can see you much better now, Ron.
Thanks, Dave.
That sounds like a presentation from the auditors. Other questions from the board? I am looking for, oh, Priscilla, I see your hand. Are you ready?
I just have to figure out, unmute. Are the reconciliation things being addressed in the, in the office? Because in the written report that I read, it seemed like there were problems with reconciliation all the way down through in the documentation. Have we established some procedures that are going to take care of that and make sure that we're right on, you know?
We've established some procedures.
All of the stuff to protect our employees as well as the funds.
Yeah. We definitely made progress in the procedures. I'll let Miranda speak. I still think that the reconciliations are behind Priscilla, and that's the plan that we worked out with Chris to make, and then we'll have continued conversations with Flora, you know, to just to make sure they don't fall far behind so we can sit and have conversations and progressions, you know, with you all. Miranda, where are we at with the bank recs? I know that they're all not done and complete and a lot of the other general ledger regulations. Can you, can you speak to that?
Yes. Right now, two of your bank reconciliations are complete for the entire year, where I'm almost done with the third entity. So they should be all done by the end of this week for bank reconciliations. And as I'm going, I'm turning them over to Flora so that they can make adjustments in the, in the books prior to, you know, giving me a trial balance for us to really begin our FY '20 audit. So, and, and that's the process that we have established for your bank reconciliations, your assessment reconciliation, asset liability accounts, and it'll just be, it'll be a process working with Flora, a joint effort between Flora and me in getting this done before we truly get to the meat of the FY '20 audit, which will allow the audit to go a lot more smoother than FY '19.
There are further questions?
I was just really concerned. I wanted to make sure that our employees are, you know, are, are protected as well, because I don't want, you know, it to look like we don't have all the documentation that we need.
We understand, Priscilla. And I'll tell you, again, I just think everybody underestimated the magnitude of this conversion to e-finance and just the problems and stress it was going to cause on everything, including your infrastructure, Priscilla. It was ugly.
And I've been working with Teresa today on the reconciliations that I got from Miranda as well. I was looking on them because Teresa will be out for a couple of days, so I just want to be able to catch up with it. And since Miranda has everything up to date to June, we want to be able to keep going forward to July and hopefully keep everything up to speed from that point on. So I've been working on that, but it's my second week. But we are trying our best. I met with Miranda as well yesterday, and hopefully, everything will just run smoothly.
Thank you.
Questions from others? Chris, I'm not aware of any other questions. Do we have any questions in the chat?
Carol's got her hand up.
Yeah, I do have my hand up. Just to thank you to the accountants for making this presentation. You began, Miranda, with the fund balances. Chris has also sent to us the various reports, the response by our administration to recommendations. I just didn't know whether you were going to address that tonight or not. I mean, we have had access to the reports. I've read them and actually think that in the end, that all looks good, and our administration has been responsive. But I just didn't know whether this presentation from you all was going to address any of those points.
I can't. Are you talking about the, are you talking about the single audit in the back of the SU audit report or the management letter that was sent?
I think I was looking at the management letter.
Management letter, absolutely. You know, and, and when we put the letter together, it came, it's because of what we found in FY '19. You just happened to get it June 30 or July of 2020 with the audit. So, but a lot of these points, some, we've, and we've addressed these concerns with management, with Chris, along the way as we found them. So nothing came as a surprise, and management worked with us in understanding what we're saying and what needs to happen to make changes, to improve their processes and procedures. And that's what the management letter is. It's, it's, we found these things. You need to work on them to improve them. You know, nothing rose to the level of saying, wait, your books are wrong. So, so this is just, smaller items we found that said, work on this to improve your functions. As we go through it, like, right off the bat, your operating system, you took care of that in FY '20 when payroll finally went on to e-finance. And I know they've been getting training throughout the year. So, you know, automatically in FY '20, that's going to be taken care of and taken off the report for FY '20.
And our biggest, our biggest concern, you guys, as Miranda said before, you know, we, we, we're making progress with the bank reconciliations. And as we've talked about, Chris, with the plan and engaged Flora, we're more so concerned about all the other reconciliations, you know, with revenues and expenses and other balance sheet accounts, you know, that that stuff all talks to everything. And I think that there's still some work that needs to be done there. We're starting your pre-audit. We're confident that it's in better shape this year because of all the work that happened last year. But we'd really like to answer the reconciliation question of the non-cash account, probably in about another 30, 45 days after Flora gets her hands on it. And, you know, and we will work with you all to, just to make sure that the progress that we expected to see is there.
Yes, Chris?
No, you know, the, like, the Ron, Miranda, and Cindy were alluding to, it's a lot of work that was done last year to get ourselves up to speed, to get this audit completed for the 2018, '19 audit. But I, you know, I want to, I want to thank Ron, Cindy, and Miranda since the day one of their working with us and making sure that we understand what needs to be done, how to do it, and given us the assistance, and, you know, especially me, giving me the assistance to understand the whole process as we go so we can continue to improve on it. They've been fabulous, and they've gone above and beyond in taking time, not just time, but patience with me, so I can fully understand what the process is about. Because, you know, you know, I was a little more involved with it this past year, more so than probably most superintendents are considering our situation. But they were very patient, and I just wanted to publicly thank them.
Thank you for that, Chris. I will say, back when, the pre-COVID days, it was the rare day I was in the SU where I didn't see someone from Ron's office heard at work untangling a very complicated situation. I think we're all glad to see that in the rearview mirror. And speaking on behalf of the boards, we really do appreciate the work that RHR Smith and Company has done for us. And, Chris, if there's nothing else that we need to discuss on the audit, then I think we're ready to move toward communication and public comment. Okay, we're under Item 3, which is Communication and Public Comment. And is there anyone here tonight that would like to address the board on any topic?
I'll keep an eye on the chat room. Lynn and I will keep an eye on the chat room as of right now. We don't have anything.
Okay. We're down to policies. I'm not aware of any policy work, Chris. Is there any?
No, there's not.
Okay. Reports, superintendent?
Yeah, so I think, good evening, everyone. I'm going to jump right into the, the start of the school year data that I had sent out last week, either the end of the mid last week. This was data that was requested by a number of the board members. So I hope you all had a chance to read over it. Just going to brush through the different tabs we have here, just to make sure everyone understands what we're looking at. So I'm going to share my screen. Okay, so this first page here, we have, we have all the schools. And when you, under the hybrid teachers, what we mean by hybrid in this case is all the teachers who are teaching, you know, the Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesday remote, Thursdays, Fridays, you know. So these are the numbers that you have horizontally by school. So that's what the hybrid teachers are. Those are the teachers who are going into the buildings Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and remote on Wednesday. Title I teachers are the teachers that are assisting with the Title I services on the remote days and while they're in school. Self-explanatory for special ed. We do have a few regular pairs. You can see the majority of our pairs that we have are special education pairs. There's a lot of work that needs to be done with IEPs because of the huge changes in the delivery of instruction that we're seeing under the current COVID crisis. So the pairs, as we adjust the, the IEPs, we need those pairs available to make sure that we're in compliance with the IEPs. VTLVLC, which is Vermont Virtual Learning, these are the teachers that we have assigned to that. And like I said, vertically, it tells you how many each school has. Enrollment was an interesting, putting it together. For the main fact, if you go right to the end, you say new enrollments, you know, we are seeing new enrollments across the board. Whether it's directly related to the COVID and people moving out of their communities into smaller communities, I don't know. But it does seem to have some new enrollments in all of the schools. This is broken up by school. First one you have is Westminster. And one of the areas that we're asked that we're, I report out on was, you know, the pods of the group As and Bs. Some of the schools had the pods, some of them didn't. But this gives you an idea of how the groups would be broken out. We talk about group A and B groups. We're talking about the groups that will come Monday, Tuesday would be A, Thursday, Friday would be the B groups. So those are the numbers that are tied into those for all the different schools. I'm just scrolling through so you can take a look at them. If you look at Central, this is something that the principal put in to notify that there is some intermingling between, between some groups. So the asterisk means intermingling. Outdoor education, this is just a, it's pretty self-explanatory in regards to, you know, what additional areas and how we're going to utilize outdoor space or, you know, just looking at different learning environments in general. And so each school is giving the board a little bit of a blurb on how they're going to accomplish that. And you'll see, you'll see different, it looks different at some schools, and it looks, in some ways, it looks similar. You know, some schools do have, already have the outdoor space to conduct outdoor classrooms, other buildings, rented tents. So they could use those as well. PPE supplies, same way. Tried to keep it the same across the board in all of these, the way you look at them. It's vertically across in regards to what we, what we currently have. Keep in mind, this is what we currently have. Schools are all constantly on the, you know, on the ordering. It's not like we're taking a break from ordering the supplies we have. It's something we're going to continue to, to build on. But this is pretty much what it looks like for all the schools in the SU office. And as you can see, we're in pretty good shape right now for starting the school in regards to masks, gloves, hand sanitizer. In addition to this, you know, you know, there, there, you have the sanitary wipes as well. But at least this will give the board a good idea of, of the planning and how much we have right now for supplies. Like I said, this doesn't include, we had some more orders coming today. And Nicole, our administrative assistant, will be heading out on Tuesday, September 1st, to pick up the PPE resources distributed by the state. And those, and we're going to be picking up kits. And those kits for the school, for school nurses and coordinators include gloves, gowns, surgical masks, and face shields. We reserved our supplies. In addition to that, we get, you know, two gallons of hand sanitizer per school and a set of posters encouraging the use of masks. So this, this year is constantly changing. We could, it could even be up more today as it was this morning when I last looked at it. You could notice from the transportation numbers, we're down considerably compared to last year in regards to the students riding the bus. I mean, we have, you know, technically, if you look at it, you probably have, you have a different number of students riding the buses in the morning than you do in the afternoon. But this gives you a pretty much overall big picture of what it looks like for students riding the bus. Based on these numbers here, we don't have any past data of how many students were riding the buses. We're just going on this year's data. I was, I wanted to provide that for all of you. But based on my conversations with other superintendents around the state, it seems we're pretty normal. It's pretty typical right now with what we're seeing from numbers, and it works out to be about, we're transporting probably 25% of the students who took the buses the previous I threw this in. I thought this was very encouraging and worth celebrating and acknowledging all the work that was done in food services. That's some very impressive numbers that we're seeing there, starting from March 23rd all the way to August 21st. Over 200,000 meals were served and delivered. That's no small feat. So, you know, I felt it was, you know, we'll take the good when we can get it. And I wanted to put that in there just to show everyone, you know, you know, what we, what the food services and the team was able to accomplish. So like I said, you know, the data's pretty self-explanatory in regards to what you're seeing. Keep in mind, it is going to continue to change on a regular basis. You know, the, the teachers and stuff, that'll stay pretty much solid. We all know that enrollments change up and down on a regular basis anyways. But as of, as of right now, it looks like we have 41 total new across the SU, new enrollments. But, I mean, it's a starting point. And so there's the data you have, and I'm willing to open it up to questions if anyone has any questions.
Questions for Superintendent Pratt?
Jessa has one.
Jessa?
Thank you. I have a couple. If you scroll up to the number of pairs, the numbers don't add up at the bottom. And I think it's just a mistake, but I'm not sure which way. So you showed, like, special ed pairs, the grand total was like 55.6, but you also showed that same number under special ed for student services?
The special education teacher, regular pairs?
So, keep moving over to the right. So, special ed pairs. Sorry, 55.1. But you also show 55.1 under Andy's number.
51, 55.1 is the total number that, you know, because he has them all. So it's kind of like, it would be the same thing because they're all special ed pairs. So.
Okay. And, and then I was looking at, Grafton has 29 kids, something like that. But looking in the cohorts and pods, you have groups of one. Have we thought about de-densifying other schools by reassigning some kids to Grafton if necessary?
Reassigning, we haven't really got in that far yet. Jessa, we got, we got that. I mean, that's what's good about this data. It allows us to take a look at it and make the adjustments that we need to based on what we're seeing. And it's a lot easier to make those, those decisions when we have the numbers right in front of us. So, yeah, this will be a working document that we use to help us guide these decisions.
Okay, so that's not settled yet. Who's in what pods at what location?
I think pods, I mean, as far as the locations and stuff, that's pretty much settled right now. But is it settled long term? I would say, you know, nothing's long term at this point. And as the numbers continue to, you know, ebb and flow, we want to, the administration has the data to make the decisions. It's, it's a little more difficult to, if you're talking about moving students from one school to another. I think there's a lot of different phases to that kind of process. It's not saying we're not going to, we wouldn't do something like that. But that's, that's long range because there are a lot of different steps that have to take place in regards to doing that. And a lot of times in these situations, you've got to be careful that we, if we open that door a little bit, we often, you know, we're doing it for one student. We should be able to do it for all of them if we're talking about.
I'm just wondering what, I can think parents might not be happy if their kid was the only one in a classroom?
Yeah. And you see, you see Athens, Grafton, where are you seeing the?
I'm seeing a bunch of ones. Group A has 1, 2, 3 classes that have a 1. Group B has 1, 2, 3 classes that have a 1.
Right here.
So, third graders, there's only two kids in hybrid. Are those kids going to be in a classroom by themselves on their days in school?
I think, I think Helen's here with us. I think she can.
Yes. Would you like me to speak to that, Chris?
Please.
Jessa, remember, at Grafton, it's multi-age.
Is that still going on? Okay.
Yes, yes. All the grades, except for kindergarten. So first and second are combined, third and fourth are combined, and fifth and sixth are combined.
Okay, so fifth and sixth, though, Group A is still two kids.
Fifth and sixth is two kids on Monday, Tuesday, and seven kids on Wednesday, Thursday. And then, of course, all those kids, I'm sorry, Thursday, Friday, and all those kids on Wednesday.
Okay. And then the only other comment I had was on the bus issues. Did we load bus demographics into the new busing software last year?
We, we, we started working on it initially, but then this, all the COVID stuff hit us. So this is going to be our first 100% load into the.
Okay. Okay.
Hey, thank you, Jessa. Do you have other questions from the board?
I have a question for Chris. Chris, will this be on the website so that we can continue to follow the changes that are being made?
Well, you guys have the document that you'd be able to watch the changes as they take place anytime.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Other question?
This is Cheryl with a, with a quick question. First of all, thank you, Chris, for pulling together all this information. It's exceptionally helpful. This is, this is Cheryl with a, with a quick question. First of all, thank you, Chris, for pulling together all this information. It's exceptionally helpful. And one of the reasons I think we wanted to, at least many board members wanted to look at it, was to get a sense of in the hybrid model with groups A and B, whether we could feel some confidence that we would be able to establish the necessary physical distancing. And given what we know about the physical spaces and these numbers, that goal does appear to be achieved, uh, well. Now, to Jessa's point, maybe some groups may be too small and that's something that folks can look at, but at least with, with physical safety, uh, as one of the highest priorities, uh, this is very helpful for us to have a sense of all, of all of that. So thank you.
Chris, do you have any other questions, uh, in your, uh, chat box?
I have no question, David.
Okay, Jason?
Uh, Chris, who, who's going to be responsible for maintaining this, um, uh, going forward, uh, for the next three, few weeks?
Maintaining this graph here?
Yeah, like the data, if it goes up or down.
Well, the principals have access to it. So between myself and the, and the principals and their administrative assistants, um, they're all aware this is a working database. And so it, it'd be up to all of us to, um, go in. I look overall, look the, I look at the overall, um, data and then, um, principals and administrative assistants go in and update their schools as things change. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Um, um, Chris, I can only, uh, see, uh, four of us.
David, I've got a question.
Yes, Priscilla.
Um, I know that when we voted on this, we were looking at moving to full-time as soon as possible. 38% of our parents in the survey that Mr. Pratt did wanting full-time. I'm looking at the data that you just presented to me and I'm seeing Central School that they have, um, really low numbers in their classrooms as, you know, they're looking at 12, 13, you know, in a full classroom. Um, with the 14 regular ed sped and title teachers, you can cut that to nine per teacher. And that's four, and with all the paras, you're cutting it to four per adult. That means that if you do a hybrid, you're down to eight in a class and you're doing two per adult because there are 31 adults at Central School. So that seems like we really should be considering looking at how soon we can maybe combine that. Because as Jessa was saying, you know, you're looking at some classrooms that are really, really low, especially in Grafton. But they're really, they're not that high in, in Central either. Or in Saxons River where you've got 14 in a classroom and you've got seven per adult. Um, there with 3.5 per adult on a hybrid, so you can really divide them up and you can really work with those numbers and make it. You know, we were worried about the space when we had, we're looking at full-time, but we've lost a whole bunch of the virtual. Also, I mean, if you've got blanks and you really are telling these parents that it's because you don't have enough teachers, then we need to, as a board, serve our students educationally and, and even if we have to hire, um, a, uh, non-renewable intermittent teacher for a year or so to cover this so that we can educate these children. I'm looking at, uh, middle school with nine per class at most. That was when I did 200 students. Now you're, now it's indicating 183. That's even 10 less. So we might be down to even eight per class. I don't know. I didn't, haven't done the numbers with those numbers. But I'm wondering if looking at those numbers and the fact that Rotland is providing K through nine and held up as a good example for us, as full in, in school and only hybrid for their 10 to 12, I would want our teachers to be innovative because we have outstanding teachers in this district. And we have ones that are totally capable of teaching these children and doing a fantastic job. And I really would like our district to be held up as a model and as an example rather than behind when we have zero COVID in our district to date. Um, so are you considering that, you know, a little sooner maybe? Because it just seems like it's possible.
Uh, Priscilla, I'm going to ask Chris to respond to you. I, I do want to make, I do want to make a point here. And to cite the example of Athens, Grafton, approximately 40% of the enrollment at this point in time is opted for full remote. Um, I personally think that's an awfully high number and I do have to wonder if we have families who simply put down a marker on, uh, full remote. We won't have a firm, uh, handle on that until school actually opens. I'm making this comment, Priscilla, because I, I would like Chris to answer your question as directly as he can. But I do want to, uh, caution, um, the board and the boards that, um, some of these numbers, uh, may still be a little bit soft because we do have, uh, in almost all the Rock schools except for Saxons River, very significant, uh, remote signups. And I think you may want to know how many of those remote signups actually turn into firm commitments to, uh, remote. That could influence, um, how it, how it works. Obviously, um, the boards, I believe, would like to return to, uh, full-time instruction as soon as possible. Uh, I believe that that's.
If it wasn't, does, wasn't the remote, uh, a signup that had to be confirmed and they have to do that till at least the half year? That was, that was a firm commitment.
The, the superintendent of schools is queried. If, if you can address Priscilla's question and also speak to the, uh, uh, remote enrollments, Chris, that'd be a huge help.
So the, the enrollment fee for the virtual learning through VTVLC, those are solid. Those are in stone. So the numbers on there are accurate. Um, as far as, um, Priscilla, what you're, you know, asking for, um, right off the bat, no, we're not looking at anything in the first. We want to see how it's all working out. Like I said, these numbers keep changing. We're not going to change anything before we know what we have in place is working. But I, I, I do want to have, um, um, some of the principals respond to your, um, your numbers. Guys to teachers versus how many students in a grade level. Um, because, you know, I think, you know, Carrie at Central, you can, can give you the information on that because it'll give you a better understanding of, um, what it looks like, um, on the front line.
And may I say, may I speak to the virtual? Actually, um, they have two weeks, to, once they start virtual, uh, the virtual learning co-op, cooperative, they have two weeks from September 8th in which they can pull out if they change their mind. We have just uploaded the K5. I think we did that yesterday and today the middle school went up. So parents are really clamoring, what classes can I get? What can I do? And we, we've just uploaded them. And I think another thing you need to remember, especially at Central, is they have the Tides program or, I'm not sure it's Tides, but they have an intensive needs program. So there's actually paras for every child and pretty much special ed teacher focused right on those kids. So you're going to see some of those proportions look high. But, um, my understanding, and Andy Haas is here tonight, the intensive need students will be coming four days a week. And I could be wrong and he can correct me. Thank you.
Let me, I also want to have, um, Mrs. Kennedy, principal at Central Elementary School, you know, respond. Um, because she has some, you know, solid numbers and what it actually looks like in the classrooms based on student-teacher ratio. So Ms. Kennedy, can you talk a little bit about that, please?
Absolutely. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Um, so Kelly Green, um, I think Priscilla to speak to that, and you had run in her room to look at the measurements, um, had gone back in with the six-foot requirement. And she's still struggling because we have some intensive need students that do go all four days. So she needs, even though they're technically assigned to one cohort, they are in both cohorts. Um, so the numbers, that's why I asterisked on that list. Um, it, it's a little bit different than what you're just looking at. So right now in grades three and four, there are only, there's only one teacher in the grade instead of two per grade. We lost two teachers to the virtual teaching. Um, and so because of that, we actually had to shift a teacher from fourth grade to kindergarten. Um, because at the time we had 27 kindergartners and only one teacher. Um, so Kelly Green in her class right now has, uh, 23 or 24. We're still trying to straighten out the numbers. Um, between the two cohort days. And of those days, you'll see where it says IN on that list, a couple of the students do have some intensive needs um, and assigned paras that go with them, but they also go transfer back and forth between the intensive needs room and the classroom, but they are in the cohort within the classroom. Um, so they are counted on the classroom roster. Uh, but she is really struggling and we're still working with Saxons River, um, for student placements because we are struggling to get the 14 students in at the six-foot. As it is, Kelly just texted me some pictures earlier. She has less than six feet of her teaching space between her smartboard and where the students are, which is not optimal too, but we're running out of room in order to fit the students in there safely. Um, and that's only half the class. Um, so that is a big struggle that I will say we're facing right now.
But doesn't that come back to my other question about if we've lost some to the virtual thing and we need those teachers, then maybe we should hire, um, for a one-year contract to replace those teachers to be able to service these children in the classrooms and provide the education that our parents are asking for?
And that'll be something that the administration will take into consideration.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. I just wanted to bring it up so it was maybe there in the back of your mind to think about.
Okay, are there, are there other questions, um, for Chris about his spreadsheets?
George has one.
George?
Hi, thank you. Um, it's not really a, a, a question, just a, a comment. Um, just wanted to remind this board and everybody here that, um, the Rockingham Board agreed to the hybrid, um, with the understanding that at some point, not saying now, everybody is really busy and, um, I, I understand getting, getting ready for first day. But we would be looking toward, uh, collaboratively looking toward exploring ideas for reopening full-time. I just wanted, uh, to bring that up as a reminder and, um, I'm looking forward to doing so with you folks at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Chris, do we have anyone else I'm missing here?
I don't see any hands raised.
My hand is up again.
I can't see.
Is that you, Jessa?
It is. And I'm just wondering, I think there's a lot of other parents that would be um, much more comfortable with a full-time, uh, full population reopening if we could arrange for um, asymptomatic surveillance testing or at least baseline testing with kids? Have we given any thought to the feasibility of that?
No, not at this time.
Okay, anyone else? Chris, I'm scanning. I'm not seeing any, uh, hands in the participants list. Do we, do we have any additional questions?
No, we, no, I don't have any.
Okay, well, thank, thank you because that was, um, a very thorough report. You've certainly given the boards an understanding of the, the numbers. I see the assistant superintendent is listed here. Lynn, is there anything you would like to add to this conversation before we move on to the business office?
No, I actually, I, I kind of, um, answered it. Um, we did upload the K to five to virtual learning collaborative yesterday. The five to eight went today. We are seeing, um, a lot of parents asking a lot of questions. Why did this person get something and this one didn't? And so, um, it also has to do with our SDS, which is our, uh, enrollment numbers and our data that we send into the state. Because these students are registered in our district and in the state, so we had to go through that because of FERPA. So, um, I guess the only message I would have for tonight is hang on. You will get the answers that you need before school starts on Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. A couple of quick definitions, Lynn. SDS and FERPA.
Okay, FERPA is the Free Education Rights, um, Act. And what that means is that any child in our district, we can't send their names through, um, it's through the, it's through the, uh, just a plain internet. We need to use our statewide longitudinal, toodle, data system. Ricky just told me that's what it's called. Uh, I call it Power School, but, uh, that, that information is, uh, secure when we put it in through the SLDS. And so that's how we're doing it. We have to protect our students' identities. So that's how it went through. And what was the other?
Uh, the acronym I wrote down was SDS. Was that SLDS or are those two separate acronyms?
No, it's SLDS. Yes. It is statewide longitude data system. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, um, let us, uh, move on to business office. I presume that's going to be you, Flora?
Yes. Um, so right now I don't really have anything for, um, for our office. I've been meeting with the girls, um, and trying to organize, um, everything and know, um, each functions of them. And, um, trying to catch up with the, um, auditor's, um, information as well as, um, some reports that we need to submit, um, by next week for, um, FEMA as well for, um, the COVID relief funds. Um, and they gave me the information yesterday, so right now I'm working on that. Um, trying to get all, um, the things that we have purchased, um, for the two physical, um, years. So we could submit that, uh, on time. One report is due the first of September and the other one is due the second of September. So, um, working on that. Hopefully, um, everything will be good.
Uh, thank you, Flora. Um, keep us, keep us posted. Um, we'll look forward to seeing you again, uh, in this format soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, new business and action, transportation. Uh, Chris, I presume you want to turn it over to Jennifer Rose, but I'd like to start, uh, with you.
Uh, yeah, so, um, Jennifer Rose, as you all know, is the new transportation director. Um, like Flora, she jumped right into it and she's, um, noticed a few things. And one of those things, um, she has concerns with is two of the small buses. Um, so tonight she, um, what she wants to present to you is a proposal. Um, so I'm going to hand it over to her so she can review that proposal for you. And then, um, if you have any questions, um, that you would like to, you know, ask her, feel free. Um, Jennifer?
Thank you, Chris. Um, and thank you, board. I've come before you tonight with a proposal about the recurring problems of the small bus 11 and the bus eight. Now, these are the, um, 30 buses, 30 passenger or less buses that we have. These are the, also the buses that are used for special education, for, um, wheelchair accessibility. Um, it's just really the workhorse of this fleet, I'll tell you. And these two buses are 10 and 11 years old. And the problem is, is that they're rusting underneath and the garages, the, um, the Advantage as well as um, Catamount, they've both have one bus each. And, you know, the problem of rusting from all the salt in the sand, all the salt from the winters. These buses are not treated, they're not washed. And that rust has really caused a problem. So the numbers are for the last year, so bus 11, we spent $17,000 on repairs for this bus. And this is, this bus is still not available to go on the road unless it has almost $4,000 more. We're done to it at the, uh, Advantage Truck Group. So the cross-members are bad, the chassis is bad, chassis is bad. There's so much rust that has, has formed, that there's holes under everything, the front radiator supports. You can continue on and read all of the, the problems that this bus has. My concern is that we need to do something about this. Because this bus will not, we're just going to keep throwing money at it and it's not going to get us very far. So bus eight is also another one of those small buses and it's going down the same path. I've spoken with Jim Austin, the owner of the Catamount Trucking, Truck and Trailer Service. And he says that this bus will not last through the winter. Bottom line, he's, because they are inspected every three months. And the rust problem is. And the rust problem is so bad that he has, I mean, every time I talk to him, it's this bus is not going to last. And so we need to do something about it. The total number, we just spent another $3,000 to get this bus worthy in March. But again, it won't last. We've also spent $15,000 since this bus for the last nine years. And so I just come before you and just let you know that, you know, we have these buses that need to continue, in our fleet, and we need to continue to upgrade them. So I have gotten some quotes from a couple businesses that we've worked through in the past. So WC Crezi and Sons has given us a quote as well as Anderson as well. There's a couple, I mean, you can go ahead and read that, but there's a couple options. We can either buy them outright or we can lease them for three years or we can lease them for one year and then buy them outright as we've been doing for the last few years. So thank you for letting me speak.
Jennifer? The board, of course, realizes that these buses are crucial for transportation, particularly for special needs kids. It's obvious that we're going to have to be doing something about this very quickly. I'm going to suggest, and that there are other ideas from board members, speak up in a minute, but I'm going to suggest that you may want to give us a proposal. And I'm going to ask you if you would do it in terms of what I refer to as a tiered proposal. I'm guessing that we're going to be over the $15,000 threshold where we would need to go out to bid on buses. So this very much is an item that needs to be warned for action at a future WNESU board meeting. And I would appreciate it if you could work with Flora and Chris in terms of preparing a proposal for the board. And we would like to have your recommendation as bus coordinator as to what you think is the best course of action. We might not agree with you, but we want to know what you think.
Okay.
Chris, that reasonable?
Yes, I think it's very reasonable, gives us time to work on it further to bring something to the board.
Questions from the board? Do we have any questions from the board?
I have one, David.
George, I'm sorry, Jason?
Jennifer, thank you for putting this together. I think the three-year lease is a good number as far as terms of the lease. Do you happen to know what else does that cover? Does it cover oil changes, anything like that? Do you happen to know?
So it will cover every major thing. It does not cover oil changes and tires.
Okay. Do you happen to know in your short time there if CDL drivers are hard to find?
They are hard to find because you have to take five tests even to get a permit. Then you have to take three driving tests. You have to do a permit or a, I'm sorry, a pre-trip maneuvers and then the actual driving test. So it takes a lot to get a driver to come through. I've had, we've been advertising and I do have one person who has come forward, but we'll kind of see how that goes. But it is difficult.
Yeah, I agree. I got my CDL license last year and it was not the easiest thing to do.
But it's doable. I got to say that. It is doable with some encouragement along the way and with some help.
Absolutely, I agree with you. Is there a chance that when you're putting together your proposal, maybe you could look at, I know other schools use other modes of transportation, like they use autonomous transportation from time to time. I've seen other schools do that. And then I'm just wondering if you could somehow, some way, maybe get in touch with maybe a local company, maybe the current, I'm not sure. Maybe see if that's something that could be cost-effective as well. I'm just snowballing here, so I'm not sure. I don't know if that is doable or not.
To do what? I guess you kind of cut out, so I think I'm going to miss what your question was.
So maybe it's cost-effective if the current could maybe do a route, one route a day or something, and maybe that would be cost-effective as well. I'm not sure.
I haven't looked into that just because I don't, I want to keep things in-house, you know, and under our control, but I have not looked into that.
Understandable. Thank you.
I had a question, you had a hand raised.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I just have a couple. How many drivers do you have now, Jennifer?
I have 15.
Okay, that's more than I thought. And I can speak from the CDL driver issue. I know Northeast Driver Training, the state shut down testing until it was like July when they only opened it in Rutland. And they also shut down, you couldn't have two people in a truck cab because they weren't six feet apart. So the testing for new CDL drivers is seriously backlogged. Issues. That's one of the issues you have.
Yeah, one of the biggest issues is that in the state of Vermont, there's no third-party company that teaches how to drive a school bus, how to get that CDL. Like down the road in Rockingham, we got somebody who's willing, you know, that teaches to me how to get a CDL to drive a truck and trailer, but not a bus.
They do, they did buses. Last I knew, he had a bus.
They did, but he has since sold it and is not doing school bus driving anymore. Maybe next year, because next year is a whole different ball of wax because it goes to federal.
Yeah.
Where everybody has to be federally certified instead of just, and have no certification as of now, as of this year.
So yeah, my other question was along the lines of Jason Terry, price out some outsourcing or modifying. I know your standard 70-whatever passenger buses don't work for a lot of the special ed transport. If we could modify one of those, adding the wheelchair lift, et cetera, and if that would solve your problem. And then Stanley had talked for a couple of years, we don't really have access to a bus wash. And I know at one point, we had talked about getting at least the sort of power washing attachment to do the undercarriage for the drivers. And I don't know if you could look into that as well because it definitely seems like salt-driven rust is sort of our biggest enemy here.
Yep, I've already worked with Chris about that and we've come up with a plan to where all the buses are going to be washed and undercoated with Crown. It's one of the leading undercoating supplies in the country. So we'll be doing those in a month or so.
Okay, thank you.
Priscilla?
Yeah, I was looking at your letter, Jen, and I saw that it said the cost of a lease was 30,000. Times three years would be 90,000. And if you added another, say you had a fourth year, 120,000. That's approximately the same cost as the two buses that you referred to. Were they new buses? Were they used buses? Would they last more than four years? Would they be less cost in the long run? How would the comparison? So you might want to work that out for us.
Okay.
If you, I'm not assuming that you can answer it right off the top of your head, but you might be able to right now. But if not, if you could look at those options so we know what we're dealing with and whether it's better for us to buy something or release.
Okay.
Thanks.
Then we'll do that.
Anyone else? Chris, do we have anyone else?
I don't see any hands raised or anything, David.
All right, then let us move down to item seven, old business for discussion and action. Update on school reopening plans, Chris.
Well, you know, since the last time we spoke, there haven't really been any updates to the school plans. I think the biggest one that, and I've had so many meetings, I'm not sure if I've discussed it with this board or not, is that the only update I have to report out publicly is that due to the increase in need of paraeducators within special ed, that, and we're lucky enough that the state backed off on mandating that we have first point of contact screening for kids getting on the buses. Before they get on the buses, we can now do it at the school. Students will be screened once they get to the school before they enter the playground, before they get on the school. It's not a perfect situation, but if the state had not lifted that requirement that we screen kids before getting on the bus, we probably wouldn't have been able to provide transportation. But also if you take into consideration that the number of students that are going to be riding on the buses and how many buses we have, we feel that we're going to be able to keep the kids, you know, a little, much further apart than we would if we were dealing with transporting all the kids we have in the past. So it's not ideal for any of us. You know, we really wanted to make sure that we screen the kids, get on the buses, but under the circumstances and the lack of staff that we have, and now that we can really spread the students out on the bus, you know, we've moved to all kids being screened once they get to the school, before they go into the school, before they go into the playground, we'll have that procedure is in place. I think that's the only tweaks that have been made to the reopening plans. But that's today. Tomorrow it might be something different, so.
Chris, as of today, if you had a bus with 15 or 20 kids on it and it arrived at the building and you checked temperature and you had a student who clearly was demonstrating symptoms, what would the protocol be for the rest of the kids on that bus and the bus driver?
Right now what the protocol would be, you know, of course, they wouldn't be, if they were screened, they wouldn't be in the building. They would be isolated. If they're outside the building, there's a spot to be isolated. Parents would be contacted and picked up. All the other students on the bus, they would be contacted. And then for the first 25 hours, you know, they would be monitored for symptoms and kept an eye on, but they would, you know, at least for the first 24 hours, they would be at home as well.
Thank you for that, Chris. We're still under. You're recognized.
Thank you. Okay, so you're not going to let any on that bus go in until every one of them has been screened so that they are not coming in contact with other children? Because if they come in contact with other children, then wouldn't you have to have them also stay at home for the 24 hours? Is that what you're telling me? I'm asking.
I'm telling you, you know, the problem is, is that you could have the, you know, that kid be the last kid on the bus, other kids were screened and they were already, you know, let into the building. These are things we're going to have to figure out as they come. I can't give any definite answers right now, but yeah, we have to keep kids, we have to keep kids isolated. And if it happens on a bus, we're going to have to deal with it the best we can and we're going to err on the side of caution. So if there are kids on the bus and someone else, you know, is identified with having COVID, then yes, you know, unfortunately, anyone who's on that bus is going to have to be monitored. And until we know that they are COVID-free, they would, working from home. Jessa has.
But also anybody they come in contact with. So if you release them on the playground or you release them to the classroom, then those areas would have to also be, so it's a problem. So I think maybe we need to be sure that parents are aware of the procedures and what the possible ramifications are of, you know, their child being on the bus. Because I don't know, I think as a parent, I would be concerned with this situation.
Well, the nurses put something out and it's published on our website. So you can review it there. Jessa, and I think George also has a question.
Jessa?
Yeah, the nurse's advice regarding kids on the bus was not clear. And they had also the protocols as to what happens with a kid with a fever, if it's going to be one symptom or two symptom. That's not clear yet either. The nurses said more information will be forthcoming. But Priscilla does have a point. If you let the first 10 kids off the bus into school and then kid number 11 is sick, those first 10 are already in there.
Have to make the adjustment.
Are they going to have to be picked up within a half hour by their parents? Parents are going to be pretty livid, so I'm wondering what your plan is for that.
Well, I mean, those are the things we're working on a regular basis here is that, you know, if we have, you know, if we have to, then as the students get off the bus, they all get screened and when we know it's a go, then we pass them through and allow them access to your honor of the recess. You know, that's just the top of my head, that's, you know, that's one way I would look at it. Nurses, you know, will continue to send out information to parents. I think any of the information that goes home should be coming from medical personnel. So they've done a good job and I'm sure they'll continue to do a good job of putting that out there. So it's one of those, these things that every day that goes by there, you figure out one thing and two more things come up as they try to deal with them the best we can. But we're always going to err on the side of caution when it comes to. Some people might think that we're overreacting, but I can justify overreacting, but I could never justify underreact.
Yeah, I think the biggest frustration with parents right now is that they just keep hearing that information will be forthcoming. And like, I understand how hard it is, but that's really frustrating people. They want a concrete plan, even if they don't like it. And even if it's going to be changed in two weeks, they just want something. That's just been the frustration I'm hearing from people.
And I understand that, you know, I understand there's a lot of frustration out there. But, you know, we're trying to send things out in a way that we know that we've checked it and double-checked it and triple-checked it. And I think, you know, in the big picture, like I said, you know, we could come up with a plan and it's going to change the next day. But I think given a definitive answer right now, I can say that no matter who's coming, everyone will be screened, students, teachers, anyone identified with a temperature or other symptoms will be, they're in the school to be isolated. And anyone in contact with them, their parents will be, they'll be notified to be picked up. And yeah, we don't know how this is going to play out, but like I said before, we can, you know, we're going to err on the side of caution. And we're going to do everything we can to get kids in the building, but get them in there. If it takes us, it's going to take us a little longer, but we want to make sure we do our due diligence and making sure that we're screening everyone properly so we're not letting anyone in that might even be a carrier. And it's the best we can do right now. We can't, you know, as much as we want to make promises, I can't make any promises that nothing's going to happen. But I can say that I can make promises that we're doing everything we can to prevent anything from happening. But this is new to all of us. We're trying to figure it out as we go. Thank you, Jessa.
That's a thank. Priscilla, I do see your hand, although Chris said that George had a question. And George, if you're here, I didn't see you when I scrolled the.
Yeah, I'm here. Just two quick things. I did listen in on Ms. Bukowski's town meeting and a lot of things were, a lot of details were talked about there. I don't know how other schools are doing it. Not this particular topic, which I think we should be adding more consideration to. But nonetheless, there was a lot of details there that were helpful to me as a parent, as both my kids are going to be there. I lost my other thought, sorry. Oh, that's what I was going to say. Oh, the takeaway that I'm getting right now that me as a parent, and I'm using myself as an example, but I need to be more diligent about checking my children before putting them into that situation to create chaos. So any parents that are listening, you know, I just would encourage you to do your due diligence as I'm feeling I need to, to not create that, not enable that situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Priscilla and then Molly?
Okay, I appreciate George's comments and yeah, I agree with him totally. But do keep in mind that providing an education is our requirement. Providing transportation is. Providing transportation is not a requirement, and I do know that we had talked about last meeting that we were going to have more discussion on whether we should be providing bus transportation, and this is adding another layer and and more discomfort for parents and more possible problems, so it might be something that we need to discuss more detail. Thanks.
I agree with Priscilla that we should probably have a more detailed discussion about transportation. Only because the parents, including the ones that are messaging me right now. The unknowns, they would rather have us even if we did a lockdown procedure that everybody thought was overreacting and far too stringent, they would prefer that to the not knowing until the day before school.
Thank you, Jessa. Molly, did you want to be recognized?
No, thank you.
Okay, come back to you later. Chris, do we have anything else on this topic?
No, I don't.
Okay, well, in that case, we've already dealt with the auditor's report, which was item seven B under old business for discussion and action. We're down to questions and answers. Do we have questions, Chris? Have you had any questions pop up in the chat?
I have Lynn Morgan asked a question, have a nurse in regards to having on the buses, have a nurse board on the bu, have nurse on the bus and do rather than doing it off the bus. I think, you know, right now, we don't have anybody's, that's the problem to put on the buses for any sort of screening, whether it's nurses or paraeducators. But so, no, we don't, we don't have any, if we did, we would have had them pre-screened before even getting on the bus. That's what we wanted to initially, but it just didn't work out that way.
May I speak to that?
Please.
What I was saying is, you're saying that the kids get off the bus at the school. And if one is checked at the end and the others have already gone on, then you have a problem. What if the person checking their temperatures boards the bus, checks their temperatures, then releases them from the bus to the playground? Then we don't have that initial disconnect of people already in the playground when somebody has been found at the end of the bus line.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's all, you know, good ideas that we're going to, you know, explore to, as we move forward.
No, that was just an idea.
Other questions, Chris?
Flora has a question.
Flora?
So Proctor Elementary, they don't have a bu, a bus for the kiddos, but each kid before they come into school, they have a sheet where their temperature's been taken at home. How, but if we have the kids taking their temperature at home and they give their temperature to the bus driver when they come in? Instead of us having anybody on the bus that will be taking their temperature, parents take temperatures at home and they provide them when they go in the bus, like having a bus pass type of thing. We still every day have to take the temperature at home. When my kid goes into the school, he has that sheet. And when they take the temperature in school, he provides his temperature and they match it with the one that they took at school, so they get two temperatures. So we could do the same, temperature at home, they give the sheet to the kids. Every Thursday, our kids get a new sheet and that's how we keep track. So instead of having any nurse or anybody on the bus, we just take temperatures at home, they give it to the bus drivers. Or they could just, the bus driver at least could see it and the kid could just save it again in their book bag and then bring it to school.
Thank you, Flora.
And that's something we've, you know, we've encouraged right along is that either drive your your child to school or take their temperature before they leave the house, before we then get to the bus stop. And, you know, just, it's a, just to be proactive in regards to even before leaving the house. You know, we encourage families to consider to do that because as much as the schools, you know, we can't do it all. You know, this is definitely has to be a community effort. You know, and we're trusting that any student before they come to school, that parents are doing their due diligence and making sure that temperatures are taken and their kid is in is healthy enough to come to school, because there's, there's so much at risk there. So we continue to urge parents to, you know, either drive your student to school or make sure that you are, you know, taking that you know, that temperature and making sure they're in good health before they even leave the house, so. Thank you, Flora.
Chris, other questions?
We have one here, it says, what happens if a child spikes a temp in school? Well, that's, you know, child spikes a temp at school, they're put in the isolation room, a parent is called. And we follow the CDC guidelines, we report it to the state and the parents required to do the same thing, so it's happening on both ends.
Thank you, Chris. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Fine?
I guess it's more of a comment than a question, but it just makes no sense to me, no sense at all to have kids tested, to have their temperatures tested as they get off the bus. And then say, oh, this kid is a hundred and two, so let's call his parents back in Athens, for example, to come and pick him up, and that's a five mile trip, ten miles round trip. You can't rely on people to do the things they're supposed to do generally. And I don't think that we should be structuring or creating a structure that relies on parents doing things that a lot of parents are just not going to do or won't have the time to do or whatever. It seems to me that we, if we're going to have transportation, if we're going to provide transportation and Priscilla's right about that, you know, that's something we might want to look at. But if we're going to provide transportation, then it seems to be the easiest thing is to say there has to be a parent with the child when the bus picks the kid up. And the temperature will be taken right there before he steps into the bus. And if his temperature is too high, he stays out. And that's the end of it, because any other program is going to require a lot of work on the school end of things. So one kid gets off and he's got a hundred and three. We're going to put him in isolation and call his parents, who may already be at work, who knows? And what about all the other kids? They're all going to go into isolation? Are we going to call all of those parents and say, hey, come and get your kids? It doesn't make any sense to me at all when there is a much more efficient way of dealing with it, that's all.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with Stephen, is that the the, asking the parents to take the temperatures and stuff, right, you know, we can't, you know, rely on them to do it every single time. That's why, you know, the state hasn't allowed allowed, given permission for the the one and all screening be done at home. And so that's why we still have to do it at school, but I can't disagree to anything Mr. Fine or Mrs. Lambert said in regards to the whole transportation piece. It's, it's been tough to figure out how to keep this kid safe on many different levels and there's no easy answers. So, you know, you know, I appreciate the comments everyone's giving and taking them into into consideration, but it's all I can do at this point is that, you know, maybe the board does need to look at transportation, it's within your role, so, thank you.
Jason, Terry?
I know that based on your numbers, Chris, sixty four of the one hundred and sixty eight people taking a bus were in Bellas Falls. And I know Mr. Clark is so old that back in the day, he used to have to walk to school uphill both ways in the snow, so. Something to look at is those numbers. Thank you.
David?
Yes, Deb?
Hi, I lost my internet for about fifty to sixty minutes. Issues downstairs when we share internet between two households. Anyway, two things. Number one, I'm concerned that the chat for the last two meetings has been private, although this is an open meeting. I believe that also should mean that the chat's open so that the board members could see what questions are being asked. Whether or not they have an opportunity to collect and be answered, I just think that's inappropriate, so that's my one point of order. And number two, aren't we liable for any students who are on our buses if one of them has a temperature and we don't check until we get to school and all the kids become infected? Isn't that the liability of the SU? That's my question.
No, it's not a liability SU because we're following state procedures. And two, I shut the chat off, so it's just coming to me until board members in public can communicate appropriately on the chat. I didn't think it was fair to have it open to the public. The questions that come up during this meeting now and over the past fifty two minutes, I have been reading, so people are aware of those questions. But if the board wants me to turn it on, that's fine, but I'm trying to, you know, control the detract and inappropriateness and the bashing that's happening on the chat. So if that's not following open meeting law, then yeah, I guess I am in violation of it.
Okay, David, I'd just like to say that I've had people texting me saying that they have not gotten their questions answered in the past meeting, not this one, but the past meeting. And because of that, I would ask that, I would move that the chat be left open as long as we have to continue to do Zoom meetings. That's my motion.
All questions have been answered unless it's directly related to about a student or if it's inappropriate. So those parents, those people who did not get a response, it probably fell into one of those two categories.
Okay, well, I still have made a motion. I don't know if there's a second.
Okay, let's get a second out here so we can discuss Deb's motion. Can I have a second?
Second that for discussion?
Thank you, Jessa. All right, we are now under a motion and the motion is to open the chat publicly. And that would mean the superintendent would no longer moderate the chat. Discussion under the motion, please. Deb, since you're the maker, I will give you the opportunity to state your position one more time and we'll see if you want to like to participate.
Oh, so the, okay, I will. And so the complaints that I received from parents were that they did not feel that their answers were being given, even if okay, even if that isn't exactly true, the reality is for the board members, if we see all the chat, we can see the weight. Now, if it's the same question asked by twenty six people or something like that, that would show there was a weight of concern over a certain item. It matters to us. It's like having public comment when some people just can't articulate what they want in a public comment or they got into the Zoom too late to ask the question, this gives us an opportunity to see their levels of concern. Thank you.
Further discussion under the motion.
Go ahead, Molly.
I look at this and I look at the people that are in here and and I've looked at the chats before when I was trying to run a meeting, it's hard to run a meeting and look at the chat. So we rely on Chris to help us with that. So we have a motion on the floor right now that wants to open that back up. Chris is telling us that there's some stuff that gets put on that that is just not cool. So can we, if somebody wants to ask us a question, then why don't we make them come on and let's see your face? If you've got something that you want to talk about, why don't they have to come right here and talk to us? Because then you won't get some of the crap that he's getting on the chat, because people are heroes behind the keyboard. And everybody that I look at right now, it looks like they can do a video, maybe there's a few that can't. But most of them can, and if they can't do a video, they can do like some of our board members do and never want to show their face and at least they have to talk to us. So maybe they need to be called on like school and and at least have to talk to us instead of hiding behind your keyboard and then saying things that they shouldn't say, and if everybody's listening to them, maybe it would be more professional. How do I turn that into amendment, David?
All right, so if you were making an amendment, Molly, would you please restate your amendment?
I don't know how to restate it. So I would like to amend the motion to say that if someone has something on the chat they want to talk to, that the chat is operated as you get called on and you either, hopefully you have a video so you can be seen. And if not, at least we see your voice and you get to talk to us and then whoever you're sending that so whether it's the chair or the superintendent, they can respond to you.
Molly, I'm going to try to restate your motion. Let me know how I got this correctly. Questions in the chat shall be recognized for video participation under questions and answers. Is this correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
We could do that towards the end of the meeting, right, so that they wouldn't miss anything.
We have questions and answers on as an item on this agenda. And Chris, I have your hand. I just want to ask Deb if you would consider that to be a friendly amendment, Deb?
No, I do not.
Right, can I have a second then for Molly's amendment, please?
I have a second for that.
So I have a second from Lynn on Molly's amendment. Now, we are under discussion of the amendment. I will recognize Superintendent Chris Pratt.
I would suggest that if we're going to continue to have people use the chat that it's done during the time that's been allotted to them during communication and public comment. Because if it's, if it's beyond that, I mean, most of the chat that I'm seeing is going on during the regular board meeting. And so maybe the chat needs to be turned off after the communication and public comment. It's chaotic.
Okay, further discussion under the amendment, Priscilla?
Yeah, I I agree with Chris Pratt on that one, because we do not have people commenting throughout a meeting that is not on Zoom. We are holding a board meeting. And if we have somebody commenting all the time during the time that we're trying to hold the board meeting or interrupting everything that we're doing, then it it is going to turn into chaos. It's, it's just not an appropriate time. Having the chat open so that if there are questions that can be asked during the public communication and public comment time would allow that to be addressed and be taken care of. And if there are questions beyond that, either if we have the questions and answers at the end, then they could be recognized and ask a question. Or they can send questions in to a board member or to the superintendent outside of a meeting and they can be answered at the next meeting.
Thank you, Priscilla. I'm going to go back to Molly and I'm going to recognize Jessa. Go ahead, please, Molly.
So that's way better wording, Chris. I like that better and I thought of that after I said that, you know, if we were sitting around a table at the high school library, we, nobody had to ever comes to a meeting, but when they do, they have a time that they can speak. And it's their time and they can talk and bring up anything they want to bring up and then we have our meeting. And then if they have other comments, even though we don't usually have it on the agenda, we've had it added to the agenda now. We always will recognize them and let them speak again if they would like to. But for it all during the meeting, it's really hard to run a meeting like that and if they want to, you know, stay the night and see what we do and then comment on it afterwards. I'd like to, I'd like to pull my amendment and change it to we have communication and public comments at the beginning of the meeting like we always do. And then questions and answers at the end, but the chat gets shut off after comment, communication and public comments.
Okay, you were seconded on your motion by Lynn, I believe. I'm looking for it here. Yes, Lynn, do you accept that rewording of Molly's amendment?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Now we have a revised amendment out here. I did have your hand before, Jessa. Did you wish to speak to this?
I did. And a couple of the points are moot now, but to Molly's amendment where she was talking about the video. One, I don't think that's feasible and two, the the guidance from the state regarding open meetings is that the participants must be able to be heard and to hear. There's nothing about video and we do have a lot of people that live in low bandwidth areas and can't do video chat. But my other comment is really that this is a case of both the legislature, governing bodies and just some people in general being unable to keep up with technology. A lot of us are actually very comfortable. I would be totally comfortable like chatting during this whole meeting while I'm video calling because that's what I do every day and that's what a lot of other people do every day. But to many, many people, that is a completely foreign concept. And I think that's part of the bigger discussion sort of in regards to this. You know, some of us, that's what we do for our jobs. And we use Microsoft Teams all day and we're chatting, we're video calling, and we're just used to doing that. But a lot of people aren't used to doing that. And certainly the way meetings are conducted haven't even considered that as an option. So those are my thoughts on that.
Thank you, Jessa. I want to acknowledge the fact that I did have a hand from Lisa Sargent before. And Lisa, I'm not calling on you because what I'm trying to do is to get a vote decided here by the WNESU Board. We still are under what is known as questions and answers here. And once we've resolved this matter, I anticipate we'll be going back to questions and answers for just a little while longer anyway. And I would like to get my own opinion out here for consideration. And that is that communication and public comment, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, is the opportunity for the public to give us feedback or express items of concern or give this board what may be well-intended, good advice. It's not interactive. And as Deb has correctly pointed out here and others, we are now operating these meetings under a Zoom format. And that's one of the reasons I wanted to have questions and answers on here. I realize that there may in fact be relevant questions that come from the public while we are discussing the board's business on the agenda. But the point of questions and answers is that's an opportunity for the public to put questions to board members and administrators and hopefully get answers to those questions at the same time. So my personal preference is that we would begin with a communication and public comment format. In my perfect world, Chris Pratt would moderate the chat and let us know if there are questions which he deems to be relevant to the discussion. And when we get down to the question and answer portion of this meeting, I agree with Deb that we, for better or worse, we should be turning on the chat and seeing what we have there. Now, I've taken up a great deal of time expressing my own opinion. We are still under discussion of the amendment. And I would like to know if there's further discussion under the amendment before we move to a vote on it. Do I have?
On the amendment, David, didn't we, was it not said that during the the first part, the comments, public comments, that the chat is opened and then closed at the end of that? And then at the end, when we have the question and answers, the chat is opened again and just closed in between the two? Was that how we phrased it?
My understanding, Molly, is that's your motion. Probably your amendment to the motion.
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay. All right. Are we ready to vote on the amendment? Okay. Lynn has just restated the amendment and I presume everyone still has that amendment. I'm going to roll call the boards here. Brenda Farkas? I'll come back to you, Brenda.
So, yeah, I'm voting for the amendment, I believe. I'm voting for the fact that you took the chat during communications, turn it off, and then a question and answers. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, so George Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. Jessa?
Yes, aye.
Thank you. Lynn Morgan?
Yes.
Thank you. Jason Terry?
Yes.
Okay, Deb Wright?
No.
Okay, Priscilla?
It's open to the board, right?
Yes.
Okay, I vote yes.
Okay. Cheryl Charles?
Yes.
Okay, the amendment carries. Back to the amended motion. Are we ready to vote the amended motion? Okay, then. Deb Wright?
No.
Okay.
Can you read the motion first, please? The whole motion as it's amended?
Yes. The motion, as I understand it, is to open the chat during communication and public comment and then reopen it again under questions and answers. Do I state that correctly?
Open to the board.
Yes. Yes. You, how do you vote, Priscilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Cheryl?
Yes.
Okay. Lynn?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Jessa?
Oh, yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Chris, we have a board-directed protocol now for the chat. I guess that's how we're going to run these meetings here with regard to the chat. Thank you all for your work on that.
David?
Yes, Deb?
My point of order is based upon 1 VSA 312, which allows that unless we have specific written rules for how we handle our meetings, we have to allow the public to ask questions during our agenda items. Reasonable respect, yes, check eight. Yes, I see, Chris, we're shaking his head. 1 VSA 312, please check that out for everyone's edification since clearly we're not going to follow those rules. Thank you.
Can you send that out, Deb? Because I was not aware of that particular one. And I would like to read it.
It's at the end of it. It's A H like that. Anyway, I'll pass it along, yes.
Okay, thank you, because that's actually not how we've been conducting it all along. We've only allowed people to speak during public comment in person.
That's right. Yeah, we don't have rules.
Okay, Deb, thank you for your point of order. I would like to move back to the agenda now. We are still under questions and answers. Chris, are you aware of any other questions which have come up? I'm not seeing the chat screen, so I'm asking for your help here.
Yep, let me go through. Lisa Sargent, there's too much chaos in my house to talk directly via Zoom. I appreciate the use of the chat so that you can't hear my kids, et cetera, in the background. Potter Dempsey, there will be public comments if during your discussion while chat is shut off. Our tech director said it's not feasible to open the chat up only just to board members. That's all we have right now.
Okay, any, so that's what we have for questions and answers. All right, in that case, we are going to move to director's comments.
David, I have a question first.
Oh, I'm sorry, Priscilla, I missed your hand. Please, go ahead.
We did not address the problem with the buses as far as having a real discussion of the buses and whether we want to provide that transportation or whether we want to limit it based on the protocols. If we can't have pairs on the buses and stuff, do we want to have that discussion tonight? Do we need another meeting before school starts? Where are we at with that issue?
Let me respond to you, Priscilla. It's been my opinion that we probably do need to meet again before school opens. I think that the questions around transportation do need to be sorted out. I think that they are of sufficient significance, Priscilla, that we really should have a public warning on it so that if there are members of the public who wish to express an opinion about that, that they have the opportunity to participate. I'm thinking also that there are probably other topics that board members would like to have a better understanding of. And that in that regard, an additional meeting before school reopens or very shortly thereafter is something that we really need to do. Obviously, if it's going to involve busing, I think we better resolve that ahead of it. So I hope that's your answer, Priscilla. Anticipate another meeting soon. Okay.
Also, the question about the board being open to the chat, it didn't mean just the board was open to the chat. It meant the chat room was open during those times so that you could bring up questions and answers. I think maybe that wasn't clear. At least that was the way I was interpreting it. Am I wrong or?
Priscilla, my read on the motion is that you understand it correctly. I think that's an item we will review at our next meeting because we do need to have a clear understanding of the action that we just taken. So thank you for that. Anything else, Priscilla, before we move to director's?
That was it. Thank you so much for answering.
Okay, director's comments. Deb?
I get to start. Okay. Again, I would have done this under public comment for someone. I have a very brief letter here that I told someone I would make sure to express. I would have preferred to do at the beginning of the meeting. As I have a great many concerns about what our school district could and should do to support our students beyond the confines of our brick and mortar locations. And I was contacted by Haley Cochran, the Director of Friends for Change. I told I would communicate, I'm sorry? Did someone say that? Okay. Communicate their wishes and concerns by reading this brief message I was sent for the record. Friends for Change has about 15 to 20 youths who they will be supporting. In terms of need that we have to see our kids having, one, access to strong internet, two, access to quiet spaces for independent and online learning. They have youth in motels or with large families in small apartments. And last, access to tactile and other learning alternatives for youth with neurodiversity and disabilities. We know the schools are working really hard to support all the kids and have a lot on their plates. We'd be interested in learning more about what the schools' creative solutions and plans are to meet these and the many other needs of our youth. And that was sent by Haley Cochran to me from, as the Director of Friends for Change. That's my director's comment.
Thank you, Deb. Priscilla? Priscilla, you are recognized for director's comments. Can you unmute? I'm going to come back to you, Priscilla. Cheryl Charles?
Thank you. Thanks, David. Again, a thank you, Deb. I'm seeing all the principals that are on tonight, all the members of the public staff and certainly the administrative team. This is really challenging. And one of the things I think I want to reinforce is that we're about to, by opening the schools, even for two days a week in person for most children, four days for others, we're increasing the number of contacts that they all have. Therefore, no matter what else we do, we're increasing the risk. So I just want to reinforce for everyone, starting with the parents, the importance of really encouraging the children to wear those masks. The teachers will be doing that, the staff will be doing that. But everyone really needs to be aware of the physical distance, the wearing of the masks, the hygiene involved. And I'm going to say again that we can do a lot of the learning outdoors. I'm pleased to see that so many of the principals have, are making those kinds of arrangements for classes to literally be held outdoors because once again, that minimizes the risk. So with all that, I know the teachers are working hard, that we're doing everything we can. And I actually think that we're getting very well positioned to open the schools successfully. So thanks to all for your good work.
Thank you, Cheryl. Brenda Farkas?
I just wanted to note the email that we got in regards to the school status and just congratulate the school on that and the superintendent and those involved. And I'm all set for the rest of the discussion.
Okay, thank you. George Smith?
All set. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Priscilla, are you good to go here?
I'm sorry, there was a whole bunch of noise going on at the time and I couldn't, I just want to unmute and get involved in that. I would encourage our superintendent to look at planning for full-time, starting with the primary students because they are the most vulnerable at this point. As Rutland did, it is not imperative that we do the same thing for kindergarten as we do for high school students. We have those options and can look at that. And now that there's room in the buildings for at least our primary students, we should definitely be looking at that and planning for that as soon as possible. Special Ed students are there four days, so there's a crossover already of all those children with the other children. So we need to be aware of that. If this means replacing VTLC teachers on a non-renewable contract for new teachers in the buildings, then we need to do that. Also, I don't think he ever told us, and it was my fault for not asking because I thought of it earlier, but he never told us if there were any teachers that were permanently not coming back. Those should definitely be replaced if there were because we need those people and we need to be providing a good education for our children. That is the responsibility of the board to do that. And with 38% of parents wanting full-time, we certainly need to be looking into that. 38% approximately wanted the hybrid, 38% wanted full-time. So we've honored the hybrid, we've honored the remote, which were 24% of the parents that answered the survey. So now it's time to really be planning for this other and seeing what's feasible. I really have faith that he can do this and plan a good program for those children. Thanks.
Thank you, Priscilla. Lynn Morgan?
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that's been working so hard, the teachers and the staff and the nursing for getting this up and going. And I'm anxious to see how it goes and looking forward to slowly progressing into full-time.
Thanks, Lynn. Jason Terry?
I have nothing. Thank you, David.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Jessa, Wes Clark?
Yep, I have a couple of thoughts from this meeting. Seeing everything that, one, there is the persuasive thought that schools are not babysitters, which is really a socioeconomic issue nationwide, not our issue. But it is something that, it's a fact we have to deal with and address with people. And then the second comment I have is that looking at the green spaces available, the green space available to not only schoolchildren but to individual adults, there is actually a racial and socioeconomic disparity when it comes to green space available. And we have a disparity in our schools of green space available. That is something I would like to look at down the road. And then just to Priscilla's point about opening schools full-time, I would really, it would be awesome if we could get all the kids back in school full-time. And I think we really should look into a surveillance testing program or at least baseline testing for kids at the beginning of the year to start with. Our surveillance testing at work, I'm subject to coronavirus testing twice a week now. And when we went from symptomatic testing and contact trace testing to asymptomatic surveillance testing, we went from finding like two cases a week to two cases a day. to asymptomatic surveillance testing, we went from finding like two cases a week to two cases a day. And we've only been at it a few days. Plus, all of our kids had to be tested independently before they came. That is something that if we had a strong testing program, would actually allow us to open schools sooner and with less restrictions. And I know that's more of a state issue, but it would be kind of cool if we could push on that as well. And then the only other thing I wanted to say is that Chris Pratt and the administration, usually I only come up against them in public, but I do actually support them. And they are putting so much work into this and they are doing a good job. And I really do thank them.
Thank you, Jessa. Steve Fine, are you still in the room? Apparently not. Margot?
Thank you all for thoughtful and interesting discussions tonight. It's interesting to hear all the different issues that have been coming up. And thank you for the work that everybody is doing.
Well, thank you, Margot. Molly Bannack?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Molly. I didn't intend to take the last word, but I appear to have it. And I would like to also reinforce something that Jessa just said. We all have our policy differences from time to time, but I don't think there's anybody here tonight that doesn't recognize the tremendous job that administration and staff are doing to get these schools open and get our kids as close to the new normal, which hopefully will become the old normal just as soon as possible. And it's a tremendous effort that you've put in and your boards and your public deeply appreciate it. So thank you for that. I am not aware of any other business to come before this board, so I'm going to declare us adjourned at 8:22. Thank you all for being in the room.